All right, we are live.
Oh, and the other, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, welcome to the Select Board meeting of April twenty-fifth. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey. Everybody have a chance to look at, um, manifests?
Yeah.
Hey, 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 I'm ready to go.
All right, I'll make, uh, whoop, where'd it go? Make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two and payroll manifest of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
All in favor? Minutes?
Were there any corrections? I think some minor ones?
Minor ones, I think, yeah.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of April eleventh, twenty twenty-two as amended?
I'll second.
All in favor? Boards and committees?
I don't have any right now, so we're good?
Budget?
Budget season's over.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys already explained last meeting about that.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah, 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 yeah. Planning is, planning is Ben.
Is it Ben right now, or is it?
I think.
We have three people doing that, so.
Didn't, didn't he send the note?
He, he, he did send a note. I think he was the first one.
Yeah.
So he is up here.
Yep. Uh, update from planning board, review subdivision on Smoke Street, originally subdivided for four lots, but one lot may not meet setbacks. Or had wetland issues. Property owner will return in May with the update. More discussion on Lamprey Road by Kevin Bassett, wants to divide his land up, but wants the town to determine where the road is physically putting stakes down. Uh, a review of planning board policies, et cetera. And a lot, a lot has been updated with pronouns. That was his report. Uh, CIP, nothing going on. Uh, three hundredth?
John, you weren't coming? You were there.
Yeah, it was great. I mean, we, but more, I mean, there was quite a few people. I was really happy to turn out on Saturday for the reenactment. I was, I was there for the first, the morning. I didn't do the walk because I had, I had nothing going on, but could use the exercise I went for, but I didn't. But the rec was great, the, the characters, the people, the interpreters, whatever you want to call them, I mean, were, it was just really nice.
Yeah.
I mean, the musket fires, that was going on, and the people and the people interaction, and it was, and it was a great, perfect weather for the morning to go on. And again, I swear, there had to be like seventy-five, a hundred people, maybe that were there, so.
A hundred.
Nice.
Yeah, it was really well attended, uh, and it was fun. It was great to see them, you know, reenact and stuff like this, and their drills, and the storytellers, and the girl and the horse, and.
Yeah.
I mean, it was very well put together, so I'm happy that it turned out to be as well as it, it went off.
I, I, um, got there in time for the closing ceremony, which had already occurred. So, but yeah, congratulations to the committee. Well done.
Yeah, again, it was impressive to see all those reenactors in Koston. They came from, from Walton, Hampshire and Massachusetts.
Yeah, and that was, um, Bob Davidson played a big role in that, right?
Yeah, he and the first in Hampshire regiment orchestrated it, but they really got it to the spirit of it. And then we did have a mini, and again, what was cool is that in the beginning, they fired guns, a salute to General Dearborn at the statue. And then they, when they put a wreath, and then John and Jeff were there for the wreath wedding, while it was, uh, the. And then later on, they lit a wreath at General Sully's grave and fired a salute. So the bookends of the two generals that were in that march were there, were honored.
Yep, very nice, very cool. Um, yeah, folks should check out the website for, you know, upcoming events because there's so many other things that are planned.
The day morning is going to become May fifteenth, Charter Day.
Yep, yep. Okay, Marston, well, there's been some activity out there. First off, um, some of the folks on the team, like Joe Porter, have done an amazing job raising some funds and really getting another push of funds, which is great. Um, there's been work out there this week. You can tell me, you can tell us better than I can about the, the well, the electrical, the electrical going in. Um, side fencing, is that going in too? Yeah.
Yep, uh, we've hit a couple of technical snags, but nothing that won't be, uh, addressed shortly. I think the two guys that actually had to suffer through it are here. Uh, we're on track, but we're not there yet. Smirking nods.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. It's just, I, I think it's pretty exciting to see, you know, side fencing.
Getting close.
Yeah, side fencing, we never, we didn't think we'd have that, but, you know, thanks to the push. So, all good things there. Um, Town Administrator's report.
All right, uh, since you last met, we, uh, not, not, this past Saturday was the reading of the, I mean, was the, uh, the march, but the Saturday before that was Cleanup Day, uh, that Rec orchestrated. NYA and the PLIA both, uh, turned out a lot of folks, did a lot of work here and the, and at the beach, so thank you to those folks. Good, good day all around, was the report there. The, uh, Saint Laurent versus Nottingham case, which is the appeal of the zoning board watercross decision, that hearing was, uh, last week, hearing on the merits. Um, there's a whole lot of balls in the air, but the short story is, um, the event in late May, I think is the twenty, weekend of the twenty-first, it looks like there's not going to be any legal, uh, obstacle to that event happening. It, I don't think there's anything left that can interfere with that. The organizers are promoting and preparing and all ahead full. It doesn't look like there's going to be any interference from, on that. There may be a, a site visit by the judge, uh, and attorneys are submitting written stuff to follow up on the hearing next week. The intervenor, the, the, um, the, the watercross, the property owner and the watercross organizers have hired an attorney and been granted intervenor status in the case. So they're actually very active in defending the ZBA as well, you know, alongside our, uh, town council, so.
So they ha, have they actually denied the appeal?
No.
Okay.
No, the judge has not ruled on the case in any way, shape or form. There was, uh, there was talk of an injunction to stop the May event, but it looks like that's not going to happen. Uh, so the judge has got the initial filings, has heard the, uh, as they'll call it, oral arguments. There'll be a, another round of briefs next week, and then we would expect the decision probably within a few weeks after that.
Okay.
On the case.
Because, because we approved it pending the outcome of the appeal.
You approved it as long as, it's the order, the, 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 the way the ZBA works, the, the decision stands unless the court gets in the, gets in the way. So legally, there's, there's nothing to, nothing to say, just because there's an appeal, the ZBA decision doesn't stand. So what, what you, what your, what your thing was is if it gets remanded or sent back to the ZBA, then there's a hold on.
Okay, got it.
You weren't waiting on an affirmative.
Got it.
You were preparing for a negative.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, got it.
They're actually going to have something in the twenty-first?
Uh, it should, that seems to be the organizer's intention, yes. That's what they're publicizing and planning for. I think it's the twenty-first. It's whatever, whatever May date they had approved, um, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, we, uh, as I told you, I think four weeks ago, we ran a RFP for, um, IT Support Services with our PD vendor, uh, checking out, um, looking to consolidate that all under one service. Um, opened those today, the, um, the cheapest one is about, is about what we spend on a whole year per month for that service. So, uh, I don't know what I'm going to do with that information, but, uh.
It's, it, is per month what we're spending for a whole year now?
Yeah. Uh, we got four or five bids, so, uh, we're going to have to scale it back somehow, but I, I, I don't know. I don't know how it's going to play out, but that's as far as I got today on that. The, last, last week, we talked about, uh, the New Hampshire retirement system in the legislature. That, uh, continues to work its way through. It's, it's finding its way through approval in the House and the Senate, but I think there are now two things that have been approved. One is a permanent, uh, reinstatement of seven point five percent of the retirement benefits, and the other is a one-time cash payment in that amount, same dollar amount, but would be for one year only.
It's, so it's an either or of what they're considering?
Well, they're, they have two bill, they, they, those sausages being made, you don't want to watch it, but there's two, two things have been approved. The, you know, the one-time thing is an old, is an old mech, mechanism for the legislature to, you know, do something, but not be committing the future legislatures to it. It would have, it would have absolutely no budgeting value for us because we, you know, yes, we'll take the money.
Yeah.
But it won't, it would only mess up our budgeting. If we knew it was coming and had to, you know, offset our budget for one year and then come back and ask for that amount as an increase in the following year, that'd actually be worse for us with a tax gap, so. It's, it's, it's messy. As is the, the redistricting, I, I stuck my nose in that a little bit today. I think as it stands right now, the state senate district for Nottingham, uh, is changing a little bit. It's, uh, the district that we're in here, it's still got the same number, it's still got a lot of the same towns, but it, it looks like it's headed toward being a, a, a stretch from here to about Northfield, which is over by Tilton and Franklin. Raymond drops out of the district and the Concord suburbs all become part of it. I think that's where they're headed with that senate district. The executive council district, uh, we'd still be in the Manchester, you know, Manchester dominates that council district, uh, and then we're still there. I didn't chase anything on the house seats. The last thing I saw was that Nottingham did not get its own rep. But that's still in the works. I, that's not current, but that was the, the last thing I saw.
The, the state redistricting, the, I mean, what real impact does that have on us?
Um, no, I mean, it's political more than it is practical. Uh, you know, when, when you talk about state reps, I think it's, um, you know, it's a shame that, that a town this size can't get its own state rep. It's, you know, to be able to have a, a specific person that you could think of as yours and, and, and be a contact in the house would be, you know, not to say that we don't have contact with the reps that, that do represent us, but it's, um, nobody's, nobody's beholden to Nottingham, you know, just by itself, so. Um, that, that was the point of that amendment in the state constitution years ago. They still can't find their way to implementing it, but. State senate district doesn't really matter much, yeah, in practical terms. And then the one, we had one thing from last week, which kind of comes up again under tax deed waivers, but we have the same folks here that were here two weeks ago to talk about the one. We had one that was plaw, possibly tax-deded, and I think you wanted to hold off and see what the other two members thought about that. Is that?
That, that is, that is the way that we left it after the last.
Okay. So that's a, still on the item for next week unless you want to, there's nothing to be done. It's okay, we can, no, no urgency on that.
Unless anybody feels compelled to move on it tonight, but.
We do have one other thing coming up later under tax deed waivers that we should talk about, but.
Okay. All right. Oh, that's it?
Yeah, thank you.
Cool. Um, so action items from last meeting. So, I mean, the E nine-one-one, I think we settled.
Yes.
That's, that's not an, um, action item. The BOS meeting schedule, I, I mean, I don't think it's, we can discuss until Ben's here, because it's his ask. And then the last thing is a workshop session to discuss the recycling center. Did you, I, I don't remember having that conversation.
I don't. I don't remember talking about it. I talk about the recycling center all the time.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's why I'm looking at you. I, I don't, I don't recall saying we were going to have a workshop session on it, and I don't know if you went back and looked at the video.
Did we, did we, did we propose to maybe have one?
I think you had an idea of having one.
Right, but then.
Yeah, I don't think we decided to have one, but I think it was a possibility.
Right, because now I go, now, sorry, now I got it. We actually talked because we were like, you know, we should have a good evaluation of, you know, the building, this, and we were talking about the, that's what the workshop was, to basically get a, a big picture, I think of, maybe where we were going with that, or.
Okay, so.
I, I remember bringing up like.
Or ideas of people.
Looking into, yeah, I did different ideas for what we could do to make money that maybe things we're not doing now that we could, like crushing the glass and turning it into asphalt or something, you know.
So, is it a workshop, or is it a have Sean come back some night and let's have a conversation with Sean?
I probably sound more efficient.
Yeah, more practical.
Well, i- i- it's mostly about, you know, it's just an education thing on our part, right? Just wanting to understand how we can support better. Okay, so that's the action items.
Uh, one, one other thing that kind of fits in here, you had, uh, discussed creation of a building committee and your newsletter thing invited people to.
Yes.
Apply, but we haven't talked about this in, in this forum at all. Uh, but if you want to do any recruiting, we have, we have two volunteers, uh, um, Gary Anderson and Eric Danus have both.
No.
Said, will be happy to help, uh, but I think you probably want more, uh, so if you know anybody, you want to broaden that appeal, anybody want to reach out to?
What would they need, like, once every two months, once every? I mean, it's not, it's not committed.
You should, you should probably come up with a charge for them to say, hey, this is what we're asking you to go do.
Right.
And then they can figure out on their own what they need to do to, to meet that charge. It's probably a flurry of stuff early and then a slower pace thereafter.
Well, just ask somebody or record, you know, they're going to say, well, how much or what do you have to do, and.
Yeah.
Those are going to be the big questions that seem like are always.
Yeah. I, I can't imagine that, uh, more than once every three or four weeks is going to be a pace that, you know.
Yeah.
Long run. I think there'll be flurries of stuff, but.
Yeah.
Feels like that kind of burden.
Have people in mind?
I ask everybody everything all the time.
I can, uh, I can post it as well. Okay.
Sorry, that should have been in my other thing, and I didn't think of it.
That's okay. All right, assessing. Lot of assessing.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the intent to cut for map eleven, lot seven dash one, and map thirteen, lot eight.
I'll second.
All in favor?
You've got some denials in.
Yeah, we saw it, yeah.
Yeah.
This.
Or recommended denials, that's, that's up to you, but.
Yeah.
Kelly did a good job.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the land use change tax for map thirteen, lot eleven dash two.
Second.
All in favor?
And I think these next, these were, uh, recommended for approval, correct? These next three?
Yeah, everything but, uh.
But the other two.
But the other two, yeah.
All right.
Uh, I was thinking there's one. Bateman. Well, I, I can't see him because I don't, hold on. Sorry, go on, just, I'll figure it out.
Well, is that one in here, though?
I don't know. That's why I was wanting to make a double check. There's so many of them that I wonder.
Is Bateman in here?
Bateman? No, it's not the. It's not on a.
That's a whole separate thing.
Whole separate thing, yes, yes, sorry.
I wanted to clarify that wasn't with our packets, it was on.
Correct.
Yep.
There's a lot of them, so.
Go ahead, Tony.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the abatement credits, uh, for map thirty-eight, lot forty, and map seventy, seven zero, lot thirty-three.
I'll second.
All in favor?
What's this next one?
Abatement application. Boy, did this all come in in the last two weeks, Chris?
Yeah. Yeah, it's that time of year.
Was it recommended for approval?
Uh, I'm assuming yes, because those are the only two that she flagged as no. What's the number, or, or, or?
Fifty-five, lot one dash one.
Two. It's excavation, that's excavation. Yes. I'm not finding, oh, this is fifty-five dash one, yeah.
Fifty-five, lot one dash one.
Yep. It is. Yep.
All right. Make a motion to approve, uh, the abatement application for map fifty-five, lot one dash one, per avatar recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make a motion to deny approval of the exemptions for map sixty-nine, lot nineteen, and map seventy-two, lot fifteen, per avatar recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, yes, yeah. And I'll make a motion to approve the intent to excavate and report of excavation for map ten, lot twelve.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we got a whole lot of sign-in to do. All right, general business. Do we have anything, oh, yeah. Um, we've got two requests to appoint, uh, Michael Keister to the, for the vacancy for the trustee of the trust funds, and Deborah, um, Kimball to the Conservation Commission.
All right, I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the appointment of Michael R. Keister, uh, to the trustee of the trust funds for the town of Nottingham for the period of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two to March, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve Deborah Kimball to the Conservation Commission for the town of Nottingham for the period of April, uh, April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two until March, two thousand twenty-three.
Is she replacing somebody, or is she?
I was going to say alternate.
It just says, uh, full member vacancy. I think when cleaning up some appointment calendar, you know, getting the appointments right, getting people sworn right, Conservation had some turnover that we didn't catch. And I think this is to catch up for that, because she's been on the, on the commission for a while.
Okay.
Getting the dates right and, uh.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Yeah, this, this whole pile has to get signed, uh, as do the manifests. All right, tax deed waivers, we just said we're going to defer.
Well, there's one, uh, this one here.
Yep. Yep.
You, you have the request, you have my two cents. This is, this is unusual. Not, not something you, you see. Ever, if, yeah.
Are we going to talk about it, or are we?
If you wish. And it's all okay to talk in public? Yeah, this is a, yeah, this is a, you, you don't have to do it in public. You, you could go into non-public if you want to get down on the weeds on it, but, um, where it's just a, it's just a request for what is, would essentially be an abatement of unpaid taxes, uh, you can treat it like any other.
But there was something that was written there, uh.
Oh, this is your opinion?
Uh, okay.
I didn't give you too much opinion. I gave a little bit of analysis, but.
Right. I'm sorry, yeah, there you go. Put that clear.
If it snuck through, then so be it, but.
Right, but I guess you're correcting what you're saying.
Thoughts?
The attorney had a section at the end of his statement where, you know, he's pleading for the financial assistance and help for Mrs. Bateman. Uh, does weigh a little on, uh, you know, the fact that she wasn't there since two thousand nineteen, you know? But, you know, as towards, we changing that number a little bit towards what the final payout is, or what the town finally receives. You know, but, uh, this is, you know, you didn't look it to, you know, did we assess it wrong, or do, there's a reason why it was assessed right? You know, for the time period that it was assessed, it was correct, but, you know, because it's a five-year reevaluation, and we had that five-year valuation just two, you know, a year ago, that that value, when that house was in, in good condition, when they did value it in two thousand seventeen for their five-year cycle, it might have been worth X amount of dollars, but due to the fact of no one living there and this, the fact of it fell in disrepair.
Yeah.
You know, it was the reason why it didn't sell for the full assessed value, is what I'm presuming.
Yeah.
You know, if I, you know, if I thought about it right, that would be what happens, right? You just go take care of something that's not, it's not going to keep what the original value was.
Yep.
But that's also a hardship thing that I find for, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't necessarily, um, the, the expenses that the estate incurred are.
A lot.
A lot, but through no fault of the town.
No.
As a result of the, the situation there.
Now, again, that's what I'm saying, that this.
Yes.
And this is where you say, you know, you're, I mean, again, I'm not going to boast judgment on anybody and their families or whatever like that, but obviously there must be none, because all that stuff might have been built, I mean, I don't know. This is just a, not a fun question to.
Yeah.
You know, be asked to make a decision on.
Yeah.
You know, because you can feel kind of both ways for both situations. And where it is, you know, the town does have a right, because that's what we're here for.
So, I mean, so. Is he asking for a specific amount?
No.
What was it?
Second page. They're requesting a forty percent adjustment to the outstanding balance.
Forty percent adjustment.
So instead of one forty-one, P D five down, brought the numbers, but there's a large, that's a, a hefty number for the town.
Yeah.
And what the lawyer says, you know, again, I'm reading through lawyers, and Chris pointed it out too, and his, you know, the fact of the adjoining lots, which made a mess. Well, my family's had adjoining lots, and we fixed it back in the day.
Yeah.
And the right thing to split the properties for the two houses that were on it, that, that's just a personal fault of their own, it's not.
Yeah, it says that they didn't.
I don't know, like, you know, I mean, everybody had those adjoining.
Yeah.
They separated them.
They never availed themselves of the subdivision process to correct the problem.
Correct.
So, they chose not to correct it, and now they're asking for relief?
Again, that's.
That, plus they're not actually making a formal abatement request, they're just kind of hoping we'll agree to a. agree to a de facto abatement on, on the side with this, you know, plea for help.
Doing it this way, rather than doing a formal abatement request, does that take Avatar out of the equation?
If you were inclined to do something, we would come back with an abatement document, that's how we would process it is. You know, uh, through an abatement to... It's just where it's a, where it's past due amounts, it gets a little...
Yeah.
Tricky from a procedural point of view, we'd figure it out, but, uh, we, if, if you wanna go there, we'd come back in two weeks with an abatement document for you.
So one of the things that you, you've pointed out here is that, you know, rather than doing, rather than agreeing to what they're proposing, we could look at the interest due?
Well, that's just a, that's just a, uh, uh, it's a fairness argument I would have made if I were the attorney, that's all, it's, um, it's right in the law, we've, you know, the town's done everything it's supposed to do, this, the town has no, no reason to feel like we've, you know, left somebody unserved here in any way, shape or form, and we've, we've met the requirements of the law, we've been very patient in this process, we've incurred a lot of time and expense that you don't see here chasing this. You know, I, I started working on this in twenty fifteen? And that's how, this, this goes back a ways, so, um, you know, the, the whole family configuration was different when I started working on this outstanding...
Do you have any practical way of estimating how much time spent?
No. No, it just comes up every once, it's not a, you know...
Right, right.
It's not, not a huge burden, but we've...
No, no.
We were, we were involved from a, a, a compliance, you know, point of view, we've had the building inspector, health inspector have been involved.
Yeah.
Chasing cleanups out there, going back to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, so, um, you know, those, those interest charges are there in the law, in, in part to incentivize people to pay their taxes and to make sure that the town doesn't, you know, get left behind, um, but they're high, they're, you know, you, we didn't lose fourteen percent, uh, in the time we were collecting fourteen percent, that's, but that's what the law says, I'm not, you know, very black and white, so...
So she hasn't lived there since two thousand nineteen?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding is when she left, I, I do know that she's safely housed and...
Well, that was, that was my next question.
Yeah, she's in, she's, uh, she is safely housed in another town, according to the attorney, so, um, and stately, so, not, uh, that was my understanding.
Okay, so it's not like we would be putting her out of her house?
No.
Yep. I don't know, what do you guys think?
I mean, I empathize, but I, 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 I hate to say, because if I was in this position, I would probably ask the same thing, but, um, I, I, I can't agree to that.
I can't agree with what the attorney says, there's no way, it's way too big of a number. I mean, I, that's where my, that's where my whole thought process was on the whole thing. When I saw how much they were looking for us to do, I said, no, but, again, what's ten thousand dollars really gonna do in the big scheme of things? It's, I don't think it's gonna change anybody's life or do anything, I know it's a little extra money, it's good to help, but it's been something like you just said, been chasing around this thing for seven years or longer.
Uh, I, I agree, I'm not in, inclined, inclined to agree with what he's proposing.
Do we wanna look at an alternative, alternative based on your tax thoughts, tax rate thoughts?
Is that up to us or is it up to them?
I, I, I think thi- this, I, I think his request is, it's kinda arbitrary, this, you know, it's a, well, we gotta ask.
Yeah.
So here we are asking, let's pick a number, you know, you could back your way into all kinds of numbers here, you know, with the tax calculations. There's, pick a number is what he's doing, you could do the same. We could, we could go do a whole bunch of, there's three, there's three parcels involved here, so the, you know, to calculate the, now we could, we could do it, we could figure out how much was interest and how much was principal, but if it's really about what do you, where do you wanna end up, we can, we can make the numbers do whatever you want them to do.
Still not in favor of this.
Yeah, no, definitely not that, but do we wanna put the burden on them to come back?
Yeah, why not? I mean, we've invested over the years enough effort into this, you know? The town's done what it's obligated to. I don't, I don't see any reason for us to invest further effort.
And, you know, again, I, I start reading over the numbers again for, you know, the fifth time. I don't know if anybody on this list of, uh, that paid out got a break either. I mean, they got their full money in tenth.
Yep.
And this is the taxpayer of Nottingham's money, it's not our, it's the taxpayer's money.
Right.
So what we decide on here is, you know, it's, it's our, it's our right, uh, as, as more aside we're pointing here to make these decisions, but again, everything we take away from here is money that we're taking away from the town of Nottingham.
Yep.
And we have to, you know, so...
So are we all...
I guess when I say that, then I'm, leave it the way it is and let it roll.
Do you need a motion or anything from us on this or just...
Uh, yeah, motion to deny the request would be good.
Make a motion to deny the requests, uh, pursuant to the Barrington Road, tenants of all Barrington Road properties.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okey-dokey, is that?
Good, thank you.
That's the gnarly stuff?
Yep.
Okay, so we've got roads and we've got health, um, in that order here, but can we switch it? Are you okay if we do Dale first? Sean? And then you?
Yeah, you're posted for a public hearing for seven o'clock, so you should do that for...
Oh.
That's okay, it's, it's okay to be late, you just, you're, you're actually having a, a, a public meeting as the board of health, so...
Dale's first?
Yeah.
Hey Dale.
Hello, thank you for seeing me. So we're here tonight to talk about House Bill seventy-nine that passed in June of two thousand twenty-one. And what this House Bill did is it led to, um, R S A one twenty-eight that passed, and basically it said that every town has to form a health department. We obviously had a health officer and every town has health officers, but not necessarily a health department. And that is the requirement now, and the overall goal of this is to really have selectmen, select boards more informed of what's going on in their town, um, and to provide better services. So it, it has a couple of different parts, it raises the, the bar of what we're supposed to be doing. There's a few technical things in here, but it's nothing critical. So what we have to do is when this passed was within the first year, we have to have, form a health department. And the health department consists of you and me, it's the health officer and the board of selectmen, we're all on, we are now the health department.
You're the, you're the board of health in the new law, you're not the health department?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's the board of health, it's not the health department?
Yes.
Okay.
They kinda, they do go ahead, it's, it's common terminology, goes back forth, but yes, technically, yes. Um, and it has a couple of advantages, one that I'm gonna get into, a second that I'm a health officer at a different time, we'll talk about that. But first, what the requirements are is, when this first came out, there was discussion that you guys were gonna have to go to training. Um, I've been going through the literature lately and I haven't seen that, I'm not sure where that disappeared. I have to go to training, I have to do three hours of training and I have to do it every three years. Another requirement is, there's gonna be background checks on me, but we did that when we started, so that is covered. And it goes through a whole process of what we have to do, we have to meet once a year. And when you have a public meeting, this is gonna serve as that tonight, this is a public meeting. We have to meet a minimum once a year where I tell you what's going on in the town, what the hazards are, things like that. It's really just kind of a, let's be honest, it's been overlooked, you know, it's, we just do our jobs, but it's really to inform you of what's, what's we're at and what the big picture is, the scope of it. It's not really too much to it. Before I actually get into specifically for us, um, the duties of the health officer, there's really five things that I'm charged with. It is the health, public nuisances, housing, clinical diseases, and then things like school days' care, foster care, things like that. As the health officer, those are what my responsibilities are, and now technically yours too, but, um, you would act upon that through me. One of the reasons why I find this is kind of important, and I'm gonna talk about a different town that I just, I, I'm also a health officer in another town, where we tried to condemn a house that was necessary, it, it was bad. And legally, we couldn't do it because we didn't have the, the board. And it has to go through that where, if something like were to come to that, let's say Nottingham was actually to try to condemn a property, if it got to that point, um...
What made it a bit, out of curiosity? What made that come up?
What do you mean, right now?
Why, why were you condemning it, like, was it because of the...
There?
I mean, just a general...
It was a safety and health hazard to the public.
Were there people living there?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm not gonna go into too much...
No, no, it's all, that's a fine, that, that's all I need to know, I was just curious.
Um, usually what happens in a case like that is when you have a health hazard to the person living there, but we even have, we have places in this town where our people are not living there, but that are for a line, you know, health hazards to the neighbors and things like that. But in order to condemn them, going through legal counsel, I couldn't even do that because we didn't have a board at the time. There was nobody to go out there, they don't allow one person, it's too much power for one person to have, so everybody has to be involved in decisions and things like that. That's where something like this could play in, just to let you understand what your scope could be. It's very rare that we would condemn a house, that is like the extreme, that's not something that we're trying to do, we find ways of working with people and things like that. But if it got to that point, I could come to you and say, we're gonna activate and, you know, obviously going through legal counsel and things like that, that could be like one of your scope, you know, something. So those are the five areas that I'm sort of responsible, and I'm gonna talk to you once a year, this is gonna count as our meeting for this year. It was kind of interesting, because when I did this, one of the things that we're supposed to do is provide a schematic of where we are and what the town our hazards are, and it's, it was very interesting, because the other town I'm a health officer for is not far away from here, and our hazards or concerns were completely different. I was amazed when I was writing theirs and writing ours and looking at them, what it, you know, a, and they're very close to each other, the towns, but we have different things. What I would say, and I'm supposed to tell you what our concerns are in this town, as the health officer, I would say, probably, and this is good because it is not high up on the list, but it would be, um, I would say the top two would be junkyards, and it's not so much just the junk and the nuisances from it, but it brings rodents, it brings things like that, which leads to diseases and stuff for your neighbors and things. So that's one of the things that we've been working on, well, since I've been here, we've cleaned up quite a few. Um, we still have some to go, I, I would say that actually junkyards is our biggest concern as the health officer. And that's fortunate because it's pretty low on the list of things that it could be, where, where the problems that we could be having. So tha- that's really my main concern. The other one would be i- if I had to classify, I would put it under housing, but it is not in the sense that you would be thinking or most people would be thinking. When we look at housing from a health perspective, we're talking about things like rentals and people, you know, living in conditions that they shouldn't be. I would say as a health officer though, we have a lot of people in this town living in facilities that are not approved and they shouldn't be. And it's just something kind of big picture to be aware of.
You thinking like campers or tents or...
Yeah, mostly campers.
Tiny houses?
No, tiny houses are actually allowed, um, we allow tiny houses, but they have to follow the same procedures as a, we consider a tiny house a house, we do allow them, and then when people realize everything that they have to go through, they just go to a different town anyways. We don't allow tiny houses to just pull up and, you know, not having an approved septic plan and things like that. But I'm referring to more campers and even illegal ADUs and stuff like that, but it's, you know, overburdening septic systems and things. I would say those are the hazards that Nottingham has, which, big picture, it's not that bad, we're not in bad shape. I think a lot of other communities have it much worse than us, but these, those are the two big hazards that I would tell you that we should be worried about is, is junkyards and the results of that. And housing is something that we need to consider.
Looking at it, consider though, I know you said, like crackdown, like, what is consider?
We don't...
We look at it and we say, we know there's a problem, but eh.
Typically, we don't look for problems. When we, we see them and we find them and then become aware in any capacity, we will deal with them and respond to them. You know, so if we know of something out there, we will. It gets into all kinds of decisions, like when you start going down the road as far as whether you're going to evict anybody, whether, I find it much better to work with people and give them compliance and give them a lot of leeway, but to have a plan in place, and usually you get much better cooperation quicker than instead of coming in, you know? So I don't try the crackdown thing right away, we try to help people and help them and, you know, but not, also not let the town be taken advantage of.
Sure.
You, you, you can accomplish a lot more that way, um, that's the general philosophy. But I guess I would say, not so much looking at it case by case, but looking at a big picture. And that's what tonight is about, is to give you a big picture of the town, is you do have a lot of people living in campers and stuff like that, because over the last couple decades, it's been allowed. The town has just said, look the other way. So there's a mindset, so when I say, you know, how to deal with it, I'm thinking maybe big picture and changing that philosophy a little bit. Um, we, we don't ignore anything when we see them, when they come to us, I just dealt with one today. We address them. But I think it's a philosophy or a mindset of not only you, but the community. Community just thinks it's not a big deal, that it's allowed, that, that we've never done anything, and that's going back over the last decade or two.
So how do you get someone to transition out of that situation? I mean, is it, are they living in a camper because they just can't afford proper housing or...
There's so many different scenarios, that's one. Of course, we have to also take in COVID for the last, you know, two, three years, that, that just changed all the rules, you know, we, there was a lot more leeway given that way. Uh, what we did is we actually implemented the seasonal camping permit, and we gave a way for people to do it legally, short term. You still, and the benefit of that is instead of somebody just living in a camper doing what they want, dumping gray water and stuff onto the ground, we gave them a way that says, okay, we're gonna allow you to do this short term, there's a, you know, a, a date on it, but you have to meet these rules, and by this date, you have to transition out. And we even have a, they can come back and ask for an extension, which is part of it, but there is a deadline. And that's how we, we transition is by working with them and, and helping them get to that point, instead of just saying, oh yeah, you gotta do something in the future. We actually put a, a timeframe on it, but try to get them to that point. It's working, but there's a lot out there. I, I would say again, though, that in the big picture compared to some of the other towns and the things as far as the priority list, these are pretty low on the health hazard side, so we're in pretty good shape, I think.
So, so this is, this, to me, this is good, right? However...
It's not that bad at all.
However, since this is kind of like the starting point, and this is brand new for the board, you guys can weigh in, but... you guys can weigh in, but what I would like to see is, I'd like to see a report that covers each of the five areas that you're responsible for, with kind of a, here's where we're at in each of these five areas.
I can do that, some of them will be very basic because we don't have anything in those categories at all. That's fine, we can do that. And the other thing is, as long as you understand that the majority of stuff that I view with is confidential.
That's fine.
So you would just be getting generic information.
Well, i- i- it's hard for us, for me anyway, to say, okay, we're gonna meet with you once a year. And like, for me, I need a complete starting picture of where we're at, so that when we come to next year, then.
Like a baseline for comparison.
Yeah, exactly.
That's easy enough to do.
And it helps to educate us a little bit more about the things we should be thinking about. When you talk to us.
I could put something together like that, that's not a problem.
That'd be great.
RSA 128 covers health. RSA 147 covers nuisances. RSA 48A covers housing. RSA 141C covers communicable diseases. And then the last area is actually uh things such as schools, day cares, foster care, that's actually where I do the majority of my work, believe it or not. Is that type. And that's just compliance, that's not enforcement or anything, it's really, you know, if somebody wants to adopt somebody, if there's a foster child, if there's school inspections, those kind of things. That's where the most of the health time is actually spent.
Is COVID considered under communicable diseases?
What?
Okay, just checking. Next question.
I don't know, to be honest, I, i- it's I, I do not believe it falls into that category to separate itself, which is actually kind of funny because I did just see something coming that that's gonna be changing again too even. I don't know technically where we are on that. I will get you an answer on that though. It is not something that I would, I don't wanna say it's not from a technical aspect, because it very well may be and it may be classified that way. But that is not like the intent of what we were talking about. You know, we were talking about things like whether, and it could even be in a neighboring town that we have triple E's actually much bigger problem for us than here. So we're looking more at things like that than, you know, those type things. Uh, so I don't wanna say no and give you the wrong answer. Do you guys have any questions for me or anything that you would like to say besides a baseline and, and any answer to that question?
No, I just, I just think if we can get a report that is the snapshot of where we are today, which concerns are, that kind of stuff, then that would be helpful for us.
Yep.
Happy to see the concerns are on the low side, so it's always nice to hear.
Can you repeat that, Sid?
I'm happy to see the concerns are on the low side.
Yes.
Which is nice to hear.
I think there's a lot of them, but it's on the lower priority. I mean, we do have a lot of junkyards in this town that need to be cleaned up, you know, and we are working on them, but it's not, you know, like you said, it's not a major concern as far as big picture.
Now, when you classify, because I remember I'll go back here probably fifteen something years ago when I was sitting on the zoning board. In the zoning ordinance, there was uh mentioned about junkyards.
Yes.
It's part of right there.
Yes.
You know, and then the definition, some of the things were on there were, you know, setback like no, you know, just. Are we using that as, when you talk about a junkyard, you know, you can only have three cars, you know, the driver unregistered. Well, what do you, is, you can see, I guess when you say there's a lot of junkyards, I haven't looked a lot of these houses, and they may not be as kept up as other people's houses, but is that, are we considering junkyard because of the hazardous materials, the amount of material that's in the yard, are you concerned because, I mean, there's a lot, the, the ordinance is vague, there's a lot of stuff on there, so.
That, that's a really good question, so I can actually go to a property with two different hats on. You're right, so from a code enforcement, you know, if you have, I literally just got a complaint today that I was talking about earlier. Um, somebody has six unregistered cars in their yard. That is a junkyard by definition, so from a code enforcement, that is a junkyard. That's not really what I'm talking about here though. I am talking about, let's say, a different property that has garbage and mattresses and the cars and things like that, where we're worried about um rodents and, and things like that and, and diseases, so I'm looking at it from, y- you are correct, the technical term, and we can use that when we enforce it, the zoning side.
Right.
But we're also coming at it from a health angle too.
So there's two sides to when you walk on a property, how you can evaluate or both.
Six sides.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
As I'm just kind of, that's why I was just clarifying the fact of, you know, the zoning.
Just because somebody has a technical junkyard doesn't make it a health hazard.
Correct, that's.
Right. A- and that's a very good distinction, you know. You, you got a bunch of unregistered vehicles, clean up the mess, that doesn't make it a health hazard.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that it's not either.
True.
But it's unregistered cars, right?
Unregistered cars.
Okay, so when my youngest gets around to buying his first car, and I have four in the driveway, I won't be a junkyard.
What is your address, sir?
Depends on what kind of car he buys.
It's unregistered.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, nope, that's it.
Any questions?
You actually do, I will get a report to, Chris, do you want to see me back here, or do you just wanna get the report and see if that's enough for the now?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
After reading it, if we feel like there's something, we'll bring it back.
Excellent.
So now that we're the Board of Health, do we actually have to close the Board of Health meeting? Couldn't hurt.
Did you ever open it officially?
Well, we didn't exist when we started talking as a Board of Health, when we started discussing the topic, now we know that we are, so.
I'll take a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
Uh, a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Since you have Dale, do you want a thirty second update on the two renovation projects he's uh
Yeah.
shepherding for us? I warned you, I was gonna ask that question. And he's not gonna have a whole lot to report.
The kitchen, as I'm sure you've seen, is, is near done. Uh, there was no snags with that, everything is going good, other than, not snags, but it took a while to get, you know, product in and stuff, so that's what the delay on that was. Um, but everything is as was presented, th- there's no issues there and everything's coming along good, so we're really happy with that. Uh, the old town hall, um, we're really pleased with the contractor, we ran into a couple of snags though. When they started taking the walls down, uh, they found um, the ice had come off from the roof and actually damaged the vent stack, which caused leaks in it, so we're finding that there's all kinds of mold, not to the sense of bad, like just like the insulation, stuff like that go wet and damaged, so there was more work involved than what we initially thought in there. Um, in fact, I gave Chris a, a new quote today, which would be an upcharge if we elect to do that, and I don't see how you could not, to be perfectly honest. It wasn't part of the initial thing, the sheetrock was there, when they opened it up, you found stuff and, and we really kind of have to clean that up. We were waiting, the reason why this one's taking a while is they, go ahead, you got a question?
Oh, I'll wait till the end.
So, um, they did the demo and everything, but we were waiting until the springtime that we could uh, put a slab in for the, the little addition, it was gonna be between the two, they're back over there working. Um, we're very pleased with the, the progress that they're making. Um, the only difference has been, like I said, is we found it was more damage than we thought it was, and it's gonna require, you know, it's gonna require extra funding to, to get it where it needs to be.
This is a lot of money, can I ask?
It's like five and change, five grand and change, between five and six.
Can we send that bill to the school? Sorry.
You can try. Yeah, I thought, I thought we'd actually greenlighted that already, I, it, uh, I don't know where the money's gonna come from, but we're not, we're not gonna sink a hundred and fifty into this thing. Right, so I, I thought we were go already, maybe we are.
Well, there was two, if you remember, the, the initial one was the the damage to the roof, which you just approved. It was very small. But then from that led to, you know, all the insulation, so we need to re-insulate that, and it's basically the room that we're talking about isn't anything that's gonna be used, it's where the boiler was and stuff, the utility room, that, that back section, which if you ever decide that you wanna heat that building again, you're gonna need that room. And you have to do it now anyways because that's where your well pump is, so we've gotta put heat in there to keep the water from freezing, and you're not gonna have a heater in there, even a small one, without insulation. So it's really, you approve it, with all due respect, or you shut the whole job down.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good way to put it, Dale.
Sorry, that's, I'm not telling you what to do, those are your choices though. So, but, but we are pleased with both contractors, we're not having any issues that way.
There's always something.
Well, once you start ripping something apart. Okay, all good?
All good.
Thank you, Dale.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, have a good night.
All right. Last but not least. How's it going, Sean?
Ah, it's going well, how about yourself?
Good.
Well, I'll kick it off, you got a, you got a memo from Sean that compares what we'd originally scoped for our asphalt work this year and the other balls that uh, that they're juggling there and projects that are that are pending. We, we do this little exercise in the spring where we tweak the, the paving list, because it's the, it's the only source of money that's all that flexible. This year's tweaking is a little bit more substantial than what we often do. But this is what, uh, you have what Sean's mapped out as a plan for the year and I don't know, what else you wanna say about it?
Why don't you walk us through it, Sean?
All right, so first we went out to bid, you guys approved us renewing our contract with Brooks Industries, so we took the roads that were on the, that were listed through the pavement management program. And plus one, I added, which was Garrish, because it was, we're going right by it. Those bids came in at six hundred and three thousand dollars, which is a little over. At that same time, I got the engineer's cost estimate to do the construction work on the drainage concerns on Highland Ave. Those came in around with the contingency of seventy thousand, so I wanted to see if they were true numbers, so I got an estimate on that. The construction loan came back at eighty thousand. And then it was another ten thousand in tree removal because of the trees that are all in the wires that have to come down to set the structures and then to put in uh, the basically the sluice way, that's about seventy-two feet long that runs down through there, and then there's trees on the two corners at the dog legs on both sides where culvert was, culverts will be installed that need to be removed. So that came up with the, the placeholder for inspections, if DES requires that as part of the permitting process, the permitting process hasn't happened yet because the easement from Mr. Jackson has not been signed yet. Once that is signed and registered with the Rockingham County uh, Office of Deeds, it will go to the Department of Environmental Services for a review, it's thirty, forty day turnaround for the permit.
That easement is for the fact of allowing drainage water to pass through his property, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, we're.
Yes, big, big structures placed in, on his property, good sized catch basin.
That will be placed on his property?
Yeah, we're, we're outside the right of way with the catch basin, aren't we?
Catch basin is right on, is on the road, what the, what's on his property is the actual effluent, the discharge of the drainage water that will run through his property that will percolate through the ruffles that are created through the stone and migrate to the lake.
That's why DES has to be involved.
Yes.
Because the lake is the destination.
The lake is the contributing factor in all. What we started with the engineer.
But all these structures help, as it percolates through, it kinda cleans it, right, cleans out the silt.
The structure, what, what happens is, is a catch basin, that's going to collect water, but it also has a sump in it, the sump is a spot to collect the sand, we are trying to minimize the silt that goes in, so that's a, that collects the sand, and then there are two dams along the sluice way that are created, that is a maintenance annual maintenance uh, uh, thing you would do, and will catch the sand as well. So we are minimizing the amount of silt that travels to the lake. So with those numbers I came back, I asked for another estimate from Brooks pulling out Garrish Road. And it came back at four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, which freed up enough money to the projects that are listed. One other thing that's on there and it just came, it has been on the radar, but it's been a private way, and now it's not. Has been Little John. There are two catch basins that sit on Case Road, you have an exhibit in your folder. What that is, is that's a, a down, that's a hill where that gravel, you see the wash on the right. Those two green dots indicate that there's catch basins there, it's supposed to collect the water, well, they don't work because they're full of gravel all the time. We'd like to pave this section of the road, it's approximately four hundred feet long by sixteen feet wide to eliminate the clogging of the catch basins, the uh, freezing of the uh, water in the wintertime from, because it can't drain. And the sand that's collected, we've had a motorcycle go down there. I know once of last year, and I was told there's been one that's gone down before because of the silt that's there. The cost to do that road is built in to paving Case Road as they go by. So if I had to take a rough number, it would be no more than twelve to thirteen thousand dollars based on the same size and length as it was to do the cemetery. I spoke to the neighbors out there and um, people were favorable for it. There was no pushback. Of course not, John, right?
Those awful nights of you.
Well, you know, some people like their dirt. Um, also, there's some more exhibits, uh, McCrillis Road, seventy-nine McCrillis Road. There is a uh, drainage swell, so this been going on a couple of years, and it's been a new property owner out there. They're trying to landscape their property and they wanted to do something with their stone wall. Uh, we talked about this last year, I told them I was gonna pave it, they were talking to their landscaper, they were going to move, do something with the wall and move it, well, they've decided not to. And um, because the landscaper said that the gravel backing the road will continue to wash and he won't be able to mitigate that problem through the landscaping that they wanna do with their property. So I got a quote to put a s- uh, swell down through there to eliminate that problem.
A swell meaning a, a?
A paved swell, yes. A paved swell that would be right off the edge of that pavement, four feet in and rounded. That the water would travel through and get down to the end of some rip rap before it goes into Peaparage Brook. It's something similar that I did last year out on Cooper Hill Road. And then thirdly is uh, a spot on Fort Hill Road that is approximately twenty-five feet long and that uh, that was just the way it happened, that was a tough road to pave and grade because of it being so flat and everything, um. But uh, last fall, that water came down the driveway and did not go to the left as it indicates in the fold in the picture. It circled around to this front door. So we went over there and scratched out this swell here. So, we went over there and scratched out this swale here, and it has worked. And, uh, so I got a quote to, uh, put some asphalt in that. It was nineteen hundred bucks.
So, so Sean, the, the total number for everything you've just walked us through?
Would be five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I got a couple of estimates that just rolled in, I had, I sought other estimates on the paving. I have some questions for them, it's for advanced paving, it seems to be a little cheaper, but we're looking at saving, having twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars left over out of this, the total of the line item at three hundred, and the warrant at three.
Yep, okay.
So we're saying we have leftover money?
Leftover, yeah.
Well, we have one less road overlaid that we wanna do, so it's not like found money, it's, you know, we put some work off and-
Right, so, uh, we took something out to be able to afford, to be able to do the Highland Ave, which is expensive.
You gotta prioritize, right?
Right. I, I'm giving you options, you can do either or. But this is, this is what, this is what we have to work with.
Questions?
I think it makes sense.
I, I'm just old school, and I just, you know, living on the roads that I lived on for all my, basically, life. When I see that hundred K number, for this stat, which I've driven over, I don't know, more times than I could possibly ever remember, just think that number's so fu- it seems so huge, for something that seems to be, you know, when I look at it, I don't see the, the excess amount. And again, that's maybe just me, 'cause, you know, I don't know what's going on, you know, but I'm saying, it's just a hard number to, to swallow for that little area that we're talking about. And I know the junction where it turns, and the new houses that are this way, and I know everybody on that road, I know them all, they all know who I am, so I'm not trying to speak against, you know, for, but it's just a big number to, for me to wrap my head around, even for those people too, where it doesn't seem like it's impeding too many people's access, it's not like it's, you know, they're having a hard time going over it, 'cause-
Creates an icing condition in the wintertime.
Yeah, to those occasions.
It washes out, uh, it's eating away at that newer pavement, which we now own, that goes, when you go down that hill to the right, that's a paved road, and it's starting to eat away at that, which we now own.
What are you gonna do about the, is this, you, did you find the, uh, well line?
Did I find it?
Do we know exactly where it is?
No, they, they, I have a map, yes, I just replaced a broken culvert that was out there that will help a little bit with our issue that's going on, but that's a whole nother story. And no, I did not run into the water lines, but I was notified by several of the residents that they do exist, and nobody has an accurate perception on where they go. All they do is they crisscross all over the place.
I know, that's-
So we did a replacement of a failed culvert out there, and did not run into anything, and had great success.
Well, that's good.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, we, we are admittedly stepping very carefully on this, being close to the lake, where-
Now, is this gonna push this box all the ones?
Now a class, now a class five road, uh, not something we can just kinda field engineer, uh, and, you know, scrub it over and be, you know, be done in a, in a week's worth of house time.
Is this cover more the reason for the concern of the costs? And what we're doing is because so much of the water that passes down is actually going over our gravel road. And that's traveling now where there's tons of brooks and stream that go under a lot of these, you know, new roads that are, would, you know, sometime their cover might have to replace, but I hope the enge- you know. So-
Do you know what I'm saying, like if you go this certain road-
There's two different ways to explain that, yes. We have to mitigate the sand that's there because of the gravel road. Uh, we have a failed structure that's there now, we have two culverts, so yes, you have to have, in this application, a structure to catch the water, so that the sediment can settle out and not travel and migrate to the water. Right now, everything's just sheet spreading down through, and if you look behind the tree line that needs to be removed to do the job, you'll see the silt that's sitting.
So where I'm going with this, to the, I mean, is that I don't want people to get into the aspect that every culvert that goes underneath the road on all these roads are gonna be a hundred thousand dollar projects.
No, I, I would, no. I mean, I know a few on Saxon need to be done, but they're not, no, it isn't near the water as where this is. The, each situation is unique in itself, on the proximities and the setbacks.
There's people that see this as the hundred K,
Mm-hmm.
and they're gonna make it a road issue. And this is where I'm trying to, where it'd be, the reassurance that, or your future thoughts from being on all the roads, is that this most likely will be an isolated situation of this much money.
Correct. I would hope to say, yes, I would hope so. Um, this reared its ugly head last July in the torrential rains, which caused a great deal of problems for Mr. Jackson and other people down there, and the road just went away. It was gone. Um, I'm not looking to go out and find these hundred and two hundred doll- thousand dollar projects.
You would, but I'm just, again, it's more for the general public to realize that this is not something, this is just like any other road in town, it's a certain situation which is gonna cost it. And it's not something that's gonna be, you know, every road now is gonna have this issue, where it's gonna cost the taxpayers X amount of money.
No.
Just a, I, it's a certain situation for the road, the layout of the land, where it's crossing, and what is what's done.
Correct.
That being said, we're still learning.
What?
What's it, what's out there and what exists.
What, we-
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep.
We don't have anything else on our radar that's a newly accepted road that's this bad. We have hints of things that are not scary, but nothing, yeah, so.
I mean, there's, everybody has a story about every road out there.
Yeah. We, we don't have evidence like the sheeting of the, of the water over the road,
No.
completely washed out of, of a gravel road, right?
Most of all, the roads have held up pretty, pretty good out there. Um, we have our trouble spots, and we know where they are when we have torrential downpours, and, um, Highland is one, Saxon, Saxon Jumper were the others, so.
No, there's steep inclines on certain spots.
Pardon me?
There are steep inclines on certain spots.
Right, we, we did, we made some different adjustments out there to Saxon, which held up well through the winter, I was very surprised and happy to see that.
Okay, so, wh- what, what do you need from us?
I've given you two, uh, different proposals, either to pave all the roads listed, to include Garrish, that's over six hundred and three thousand dollars, which gives us no money to do Highland Ave or any of the, uh, added paving. As, as, as one thing I did leave out, and I don't know if you read, uh, as part of paving roads, is infrastructure that needs to be evaluated, and, um, I've done that, and we have approximately three hundred feet of CMP that needs to be pulled out, which is corrugated metal pipe that has rotted. So those trenches have to be paved, the paving company doesn't pave it, we have an individual company that paves, will come in and pave the trenches. So that you can, that, you have the same amount, at least a minimum of four inches in the trench for when they go to overlay it. There's not an inconsistency of pavement thicknesses where it would create a weak spot.
Well, I think we have to do Highland.
Yeah, and that's the second option that came out at five eighty-ish.
With, with the other, yep.
With the other, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, out, out of the total pack.
Yeah.
So Garrish Road gets dropped.
Correct.
This year.
It's pushed.
This year.
Pushed, pushed.
Pushed back.
It's pushed.
Yeah.
Yeah, doesn't, depending on where, what else we're doing next year, may or may not be next year, but it's-
I just wanna add one other thing to the list, Oak Ridge, Case, that, I wanted to do that last year, we held money back, but Maple Ridge, Joe Fowzones project is being, I believe it's in the accept, up for acceptance this year, the final thing is, he's overlaying the final coat. So, we are all gonna, we're gonna blend everything together, Oak Ridge and Maple Ridge being paved at the same time. Because Oak Ridge is a mess.
One on the property owner's nickel, and one on our nickel, you know, two, two paving projects.
Oh, sorry, so both hard tops get blended.
Yeah, same, same pour, right, same debt.
Same company's doing the whole nine yards.
Yeah.
So it's gonna go down Oak Ridge, then it's gonna go up Maple Ridge.
Come back down, around and out, out the Case Road, the Mill Pond. And Flutter Street will be done.
All good?
Yeah.
All good?
Yeah, if we don't deal with Highland, it'll continue to be the, the gift that keeps on giving.
Do you, here's the, I mean, we talk about that, and we're still talking highway stuff, right?
Yeah.
Just in general?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, a grading schedule? Do we have anything we're gonna do with that, with grading?
We have a grading schedule. We're on our last road, as far as Case Road. Going out to Cooper Hill Road to do the, um, the new gravel roads that we have out there now is next. We will be going to the other side of town with, as soon as we're done off of Cooper Hill Road.
Other side of town, that way, that way?
Other way being Mountain Road and one fifty-six.
Coming back around.
Right.
So, are we grading on a fact of, uh, road condition, and more on road conditions than we are on a schedule?
Made a schedule based on, so-
You know, I'm asking, these people are asking me this question, so I, I'm just, I'm just speaking about it, because-
I'm just, I made a schedule based on the original class five gravel roads at the town, that, which are bus routes as well. So, we did maintenance through the mud season to make, make these roads passable, and they held up. The last road that, the first road that we did some of that maintenance on was Stevens Hill Road, and then went Ledge Farm, Port Farm. So the grading schedule went Stevens Hill, Ledge Farm, Port Farm, Berry Road, Rawlins Road, South Summer, Guyel, Priest, Kennard, they finished Mitchell today. Summer Case is done, they pulled the edges in, and, I mean, yeah, Case, and that will be tomorrow. And those will be done, and then it's off the, the, uh, gravel roads off of Cooper Hill Road. And the, and the reason for that is, those have, those have had minimal maintenance through this winter, through this mud season, they didn't deteriorate like the rest of them did. Not to say that they didn't have bad spots, but they were more manageable than others.
Is that schedule something that, like, would it be practical to put it on the town website?
I-
Even if you put it up as a window, like the week of, we'll try to get to these roads and so on, that way people could just go and look, and then they'd have an idea of-
The thought has crossed my mind, as far as doing that, I just don't wanna get myself pushed into a corner that you were supposed to be here today, and you're not.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I say like a, give it a window of like a week or two, rather than a specific day.
We're, we're pretty good right now, and we're two weeks into this.
Would you say the average dirt road in town gets graded like three times a year, or four times a year?
I used to. I don't see that happening. I see it being less, depending on, uh, torrential rains and, and washouts, but-
Well, this is a question, again, that's where I just basically, I'm not, just, that's what I think people were looking more for, the schedule wise, is that, you know, is the grader, some people think the grader runs twenty-four, you know, every single day, somebody's grading a road or something like this, and it's a cycle that, okay, if they're doing this here, they're going here, they should be here in two weeks to do our road, and the, the cycle's gonna be, you know, and I get that, I don't, I don't expect that at all from you, I'm just saying the, the mentality.
When the proper crown is put in, in the drainage swales, and everything is working correctly, then you shouldn't have to go back and, until to, later summer, if all, it should hold up. It would be the rain or something like that. Speed will cause issues on Ledge Farm Road, which will cause parking, because the cars travel, they start to bounce, when they start to bounce and do that, that's when they start to create parking.
So more traveled roads are obviously gonna take more attention. Which it should.
Mm-hmm. Some areas, we have a harder time doing drainage, which would be the twin culverts on Berry Road. That's why you'll find that there's one section that'll park where those culverts are.
Makes sense, just-
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, general related? Anything else general that you wanna ask us about, or with regards to the department?
Or the top?
Or the equipment, or the recycling center?
The recycling center, yeah, I mean, that's something that I just heard tonight, that you wanna have a committee on that, and review things, and-
It was more on a way to make it more, you know, ideas to help you to make it more efficient, I think, in ways that we can generate more income, as the fact that, you know, um, you know, I love Trash Crush, has been using it for seventeen years, so I'm gonna continue using it, but they had a significant height, uh, rate, significant. And again, I'm still gonna use them, 'cause I like them, I think they're great, nice, nicest people you ever meet. Not speaking any negative, but awesome, but the cost factor of trash is going through the, the-
It's trucking cost?
Yeah, sure, everything's labor cost, everything costs, I mean, it's everything.
About nine hundred dollars to take the mix paper down to Wilmington, Mass, where that goes.
So there's, again, I think the co- the committee was more to-
Brainstorming.
Yeah, it, it wasn't a committee per se, I think it was more about-
The decade is, was trying to figure out-
Y- yeah, and I think part of it is that most of us aren't really educated around, you know, recycling centers and recycling in general and stuff like that, so I think it was like, we were all gonna go and do some research to educate ourselves.
The glass has always been a bone of contention from the day one, I have an interview here, of what to do with glass. There's options that you can use with glass, but it costs money. You bring a machine in, and they'll pulverize it into something, but you're, you're gonna have to pay for it, to come in and do it, it's not, we're gonna come in and crush your glass, and then we're gonna take the product that we make away, and you, and it's gonna be free for you, that's how it works.
Well, let's, uh-
That's a discussion for some-
Yeah, I know, but I, I, I think we should probably schedule Sean to come in at some point to talk about it, so maybe like in a, in a month or so.
Okay.
Well, we might have a meeting again with him in three months or so, right? How are we gonna try to make, when we're discussing, meeting more often?
Yeah, 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 yep, right.
So we get a better feel, and you know, police, the fire, you know, health works, Dale, or whatever, you know, just to keep us in the loop with what's going on in town, so it's not something we don't-
So you're approving the, the Brooks contract for four hundred and forty-one thousand dollars?
Okay, barring a- any other public con, uh, thing we have to discuss, Chris, anything else?
No.
Okay. Um, then I will take a motion to go into non-public.
Make a motion to enter non-public session per R C ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, A.
Brooks Industries, B R O X.
I need a second.
Oh, sorry, a second.
A second.
And I can see the rock in the corner.
Roll call.
Hi, Tony Dimas.
I don't know, Danis.
Hi, John Moore. Goodnight, Nadia.
Yeah, folks, we'll be going into non-public, uh, when we're done with that session, we will be coming out of non-public and immediately closing the public meeting with no further discussions.